President.
President. Is there a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes in the last meeting? A motion by Congressman Donnie Second about the pickup of vehicle. Any discussion being done, please take it all?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Will Joseph Moschino, E.J. Matur, Joseph Gould, and Kyle Poland please come to the podium? And will members of the council please stand along with the members of the public and salute the flag?
By the agents, the two acts of the United States of America, the two republics with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, certainly, good.
Yes, I'd like to give a foregiving and an introduction to the citizenship of the community. I'm here actually for some festivities today. I would see the sensations on the council and welcome. I hope you enjoy your home festivities again. Thank you.
Are there any public acknowledgements or commendations? If any, move on. Public hearings. I want to make a note that the public hearing and the petition for abandonment of homicide, which was originally scheduled before the Public Affairs Committee in November thirteenth, is on the docket this evening as well as the Act of Communion. At this time, the three members of the public who want to speak on any docketed items. Do I have the assignment sheet, please? And the public speaking generally is four minutes. However, we have some people here that are making presentations that were supposed to be moved before this full council. So I'll also leave way on those making presentations for considered zone changes. The first name I have here is John DeWong. We're just speaking on a presentation, so.
Do you agree, agents? I'd like to greet the council president. Council president, members of the council, John DeWong, and attorney general officer 145 Dean East Avenue, Cranston, representing a certain investment corporation in John DeWong's concern, owners of property nine forty-two, nine fifty, Crestor Avenue. I spoke before the audit committee with regards to this ordinance on November thirteenth. If approved, this zone change, if these zone changes approved, the Wendy's Drive group would be built and operated at that site. It would be operated by open view, full name, Harvey Bennett, junior principal, DCS evening, from Cranston data. He operates eight windows doors throughout the state of the ride. The two thousand and ten conference agreement designated the property in question as high range residential services and indicated that this should be a zone change, be it C three, C four, C five. This council in September of two thousand and twelve adopted an ordinance, which was a zone consistency analysis that the state act could be adopted with regard to the parcels that have been designated as zones. That was adopted as an appendix A to the conference of the plan. And that appendix A designated or indicated has each of those parcels, the specific zone changes should be adopted. With regard to each of these three parcels in question, reassess the law of the question, that appendix A indicates that the zone should be changed to C four. C four, a restaurant for the driving use is permitted. At the meeting before the audit committee, I presented a witness who was a planner and a planning analysis was presented in part of the traffic, which indicates that the proposed use, the performance of the conference of the plan, the performance of zoning, the performance of the new appendix A you adopted. I would also point out that they did that evening, that if this ordinance is adopted, the plan is before you, the schedule is before you, and we all of the additional requirements that our ordinance provides for a drive in use, the additional standards that must be met, this project would be all of those, in terms of the block size, the lot is about forty-two dollars square feet, we need forty dollars square for the lot, would be all the other requirements for the zone and the special requirements for the driver. Also, at the, that evening, I presented at this testimony, Paul Bennett was a traffic consultant, provided testimony and a report to this, the audit committee, which indicates that if this use were adopted, the plan is presented, it provides for safe access, ingress and egress, and do not cause traffic congestion or causing traffic hazard in the area. At that meeting, on the thirteenth, there were many, well, several people from the area who raised concerns about, raised concerns about the method of cleaning the site, a concern about that, a concern about lighting. And what I point out that evening, and I'd like to address tonight, is that if this ordinance is adopted by the council, it's the first step in the process that my client has to take. Our ordinance requires that a drive-in use must be approved by the city traffic engineer. And more importantly, I think, and we had an ordinance, a new ordinance that this council adopted a couple of months ago, which took the place of the place of the new ordinance, which is called the Development Plan Review Order. This project must go through that Development Plan Review stage if this ordinance is adopted. The Development Plan Review Committee is made up of the city plan, the building official, city public works director, fire department chief, and the public safety manager, or their designees. And the public works director usually has some of the engineering process. The issues that were raised and would be raised this evening, I believe, from members of the public, all have to be addressed at the site plan or development plan review process. The ordinance, you knew, I won't go through the whole thing because I know you have many things this evening, but I'll highlight some of the things that will be addressed at the Development Plan Review stage that the public was concerned about, and I'm sure members of this council were. I remember the councilman Pedro indicating that night that he thought more study would require. This process will provide more study for this project. One of the, I'm just going to highlight some of the areas. One of the areas on the purpose of this ordinance is to provide safe and efficient access and safe circulation, and added to the off-street parking and loading, emergency access, trash disposal, outdoor storage, signing and lighting, signing lots. And that was raised that evening. Requires treatment of erosion, storm runoff inclusion, and other issues that were raised that evening. Also, that evening, it was asked whether or not there's going to be any permitting requirements. And a representative of the freight engineering, Nicole Riley, indicated that there were DEM permits required, and we would have to obtain those in order for this project to go forward. Another area of the Development Plan Review ordinance that addresses general standards for approval. One of them is, development complies with zoning and other city codes or regulations is consistent with the conference of plan. Erosion is controlled in accordance with chapter fifteen point twenty-eight, soil erosion and sediment control of the city code, so that erosion shall not impact or bloody property of public streets. Stormwater runoff is treated using investment management practices, so there will be no increased runoff from a development. Another issue that was raised by one of the neighbors. All developments shall meet the standards set in the Riley Stormwater Design Installation Standards Manual, as most recently amended. Another important issue that was raised that evening was the issue of buffering. The site plan review ordinance requires fifteen percent of the site be landscaped. Must present a landscape plan, requires buffering, indicates that one of those things that has to be done is to buffer a commercial use from residential abutments in terms of screening, in terms of landscaping, in terms of the type of lighting to choose, in terms of ridiculous circulation, all those things. It required a traffic impact study, which has already been done. And again, basically, we all, I mean, we all, the questions that were raised at the ordinance committee, I know the council must cycle us, I was at one of those Development Plan Review Committees for private review awards, the CBS, and there was significant neighborhood input with regard to that. If we go before the Development Plan Review Committee, neighbors want to be noticed, have an opportunity to be heard. And generally, there is, you know, input from neighbors, from all the people that sit on that committee, so that the plan that's developed and the site is approved is one that makes for a good neighbor in terms of that use. I can indicate to you, as I've talked into Mr. Bennett, who was concerned last week when there was talk of rodents because of trash and those kind of issues. He has a great record in all his speeches, basically, as is the Wendy's. No one's going to come into a Wendy's if some of the problems that were raised at the ordinance committee were to happen. Runs a good operation, and obviously, the city would require that in this franchise all. Again, we're asking that the ordinance before this evening be adopted, and again, this is the end of a process that will require further input from city bodies and from the public and the people who have issues with regard to that. And when you say that, the ordinance before you, if you have any questions of myself or any experts that testify, we have to address them. Thank you.
Next name I have on the clock is John DeWong.
This is a matter of interest with council president. It's a alcohol beverage license and ritual license for late all-restaurant group LLC, DBA Boston on Broad at twenty-one ninety-five Broad Street. It was before the Safety Services Committee, it was continued without a reputation to this meeting, because there was some issue raised, I believe, by the Department of Business Regulation, because there had been a license there before, they had raised some issues. That license was not renewed. I presented to the Safety Services Committee a stipulation from the district court indicating that the prior occupant of the building at twenty-one ninety-five Broad Street had voluntarily vacated the premises by court stipulation. That license was renewable, but not renewed, there will not, there will not be a second license there. That would be concerning, I guess, from the Department of Business Regulation. I spoke to Maria Wall and to Lisa Kirshman, my understanding is there is no longer an issue, there is a question, which was just a question that was raised on the day of that hearing. If this allegation is approved, while it's raising the cap that you have, really is, you're eliminating license and you're putting a new DVD license there, or the vehicle license. The principal of my client, Andrew Marino, was here with me this evening. He graduated from Pepperdine University, and he's worked in the restaurant business for several years. He's also worked in the advertising business. His general manager that will operate the restaurant comes from the back pay restaurant group, with extensive experience there. If you did buy the site with extensive renovations, it's going to be a very restaurant, and we're asking that the full council grant the, the full license and vehicle license for this site.
Wayne Kazarian.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. My name is Wayne Kazarian, I'm general counsel and senior vice president at Johnson-Wales University. You have on your, Eight Abbott Park Place, Oppenheimer Island, O two nine O three. My residence is at eleven fifty-seven Maryland, it's a boulevard in Cranston. I wanted the council to know that I'm here on behalf of Johnson-Wales University. We appreciate the support that we received from both this council and the mayor, and from SAP. City clerk has been exceptionally cooperative, as has Mr. Will Porter and Mr. SAP. We're here today asking the council to consider the abandoned apartments at Johnson-Wales University Apartmentside Campus. This request is made in conjunction with a memorandum of understanding that was sent into between university and city in March. It was approved by this council and passed out as ordinance two thousand and twelve dash seven, so I won't go back through the history and the background of this, of this request. However, Apartmentside Campus, for the record, has been paved and controlled and maintained by Johnson-Wales University in the past several years. We did, in fact, install street light at the corner, and it is surrounded entirely by, land is owned by Johnson-Wales. I would like to take advantage of this opportunity, because there's so many people in the room. I mentioned that in addition to the easements that we're agreeing to grant in this abandonment petition, which will allow for emergency access to the campus, that here is an existing event that we have recently granted to CRMC, requiring for public access to the seashore, to the shoreline, over by Save the Bay. We've got a beautiful urban coast of greenery, there's great fishing, the public in Cranston is welcome at this campus, through this access, through the waterfront, and it's, in my opinion, one of the better kept secrets in Cranston, so the people who are here, please come down. Wanted to, again, thank the council and mayor for the support. I've been a resident of Cranston my entire life, and it's great to see what we're going to get. Thank you.
Former council president Aaron G. Garabedian.
I'm Alan G. Garabedian, one seventy-three over there Drive, Cranston, Colorado. I came this evening to testify on two things. The first one, I would testify, is the chicken ordinance that would allow chickens, backyard chickens, to take place here in the city of Cranston. And I spent about ten days researching the subject, I had the privilege of talking to the council president, couple of council members. And I have to request that the city council not pass this ordinance on the basis of the most important thing that you deal with according to our state constitution and our comprehensive act, that the health, safety, and welfare of the people are the number one responsibility of the city council. I've got enough homework to say that the proposed ordinance deals with trying to set up a regular toll system of having people in the city government regulate families that have chickens in their backyard. There is no way, there is no city that can say they can regulate that factor. You have put some good things in there, you said no roosters could be there, no more than ten chickens, but who's going to be coming to chickens? Second of all, second of all, a couple of weeks ago, we had an article in the paper about rats. And the city came and said to the public, don't throw out food. What are we doing tonight? We have an ordinance in front of us that's exactly opposite what you want. You're going to have chicken coops in yards with food in them. And if you look at the material that I have, you would know that rats know where to go, wire, fence, fence, and everything, to get what they want. So in one case, we're telling people, don't throw out food for birds, and what we're doing is setting up backyards where the chickens will live. There'll be chicks and chickens. And based on what I read, this ordinance, by the way, refers to one section, and I noticed it doesn't say road control in the ordinance, but the section it referred to is road control. I can tell you this, if you want to impact Cranston with more rats, you are opening up the door and invitation, and all the documents that I read show that rat infestation takes place when, not so much because it's the food that the chickens are involved with, the food, and the feeding of them, and food lying around the yards. So I come here and encourage you, and I know I have four minutes, and I know all the people on speakerphone some major issues. I put enough documentary stuff here together, and I talked to council president Michael Solomon, Providence, who, City of Providence passed this ordinance. He said they have a lot of documentary material. And I would urge the city council, if probably we will all take a test as individual members, there's much to be learned about this. Most of them must eliminate with our own knowledge of having lived with native chickens and past them. My, here's the city council, not to pass this ordinance, not to pass this ordinance. And review the materials that are currently available, ones that I've selected and picked up, and by the way, there's information here that you can argue for, for the chicken things, and others are not, and pick up the material in Providence before you pass it. I really, I've been in this city for fifty years, and I've never come through a meeting like this to say, please, don't pass this, because I'm telling you this, it's far more dangerous than you believe it is. From the data I have, it, to me, is threatening what can take place and the diseases involved with the chicken and rat situation of us. Thank you, Mr. Council. Now, the other issue, just think on your issue, I have two of that issue.
Give me the two more minutes, you spoke.
In other words, I have four minutes for one issue and four for not four for another. Okay. All I, all I'm here to say is, and I know this is a difficult, I think the mayor's been doing a very good job in terms of fighting for the tax base and the area pensions. And the only one thing I would hope, and I know there are ramifications, I've talked with firefighters, the most unusual case, there's so many retired firefighters, I may not necessarily belong to the organization, there are legal questions of how you get everybody together, and I only wanted to urge the mayor that he must, he must, no matter what the situation is, and I've heard both sides, to try to find a way to find how far you can get, and I know there are legal questions about the entities and the representatives, it's been explained to me by both sides. But I would urge before a final thing happens, I want to speak here, that we have all the information, and if there's a delay, we can explain to the state, the fact is, we're having a tough time getting representative groups to really represent themselves. So I think the mayor is trying to do a good job at that event, and hopefully, that the firefighters and whoever meet with him and find a way, it's going to be a give situation all around the table, and I would hope that, because the taxpayers can't particularly carry the load, and I think the mayor at the state level has attempted to have legislation passed to help the city, but we haven't had the battle success. So I urge the council to consider that. Thank you very much.
Dennis Babell.
Members of the Cranston City Council, thankful for this opportunity. I represent the veterans of animals. Normally, I would encourage people to adopt animals anytime, but not tonight. I think it's important that the council know where the control disease center in Atlanta, in their position is. They have stated that Solomon Oak is a serious risk, not just at these large factories, farming people, but backyard chicken breeders too. It's happened, they have, they have many cases where this has happened. The problem is that certain people are at risk. Children under five years old are at serious risk. Anyone with diabetes is at serious risk. Anyone with a weak immune, immune, immune system is at risk. And there are going to be people that tell you that chickens don't draw certain animals.
Excuse me, Mr. Central.
Yeah?
Could you move that microphone a little bit away from you? Because this is a model.
Okay. Sure. Thank you. Wall has a serious problem with coyotes. Some other towns throughout around have that problem with coyotes. Chickens do infect, draw coyotes. You have coyotes in print already. Chickens also, as Mr. Garabedian pointed out, the chicken feed draws rats. There's no two ways about it, no one can say otherwise. That's a fact. But they also, chickens also draw any animal that has racers, and that is raccoons. They draw raccoons. You're going to have, at some point, so is Providence, you're going to have a serious issue when it begins. Is that the other issue we have is, as you recall, years ago, when a movie came out about one hundred and one salvation, a lot of people went out for the salvation. Do you want to?
With it, when you do it properly. So both for health, welfare, safety, as well as the greater environment of good, we're very much in support of that, and we're here.
Kim Warren.
Hello, my name is Kim Warren, one fifty Quail Hollow Road in Cranston. I'd just like to reiterate with the last two women I had mentioned. I'm a very pro animal, there is nothing that I would do to jeopardize, help them obey any animal. That said, I'm in favor of the chicken ordinance. I just wanted to reiterate that in the ordinance, we have a, make sure that the rodents are not able to get into these coops, you have to dig down and put, put hard mud cloth, every opening on this coop is covered with hard mud cloth, if it doesn't have a floor or ceiling. So that keeps the rodents out of that area, as well as predators, the raccoons, the people that described before. As well, we document that the feeding has to be done, importance to the rodent section of the code room, the city of Cranston. We made sure that we wrote this ordinance, that we did so in a manner that abide by those, the feeding of animals, and the keeping of their food as well. So I, I hope that you keep that in mind, and that we are trying, the goal of this ordinance is to set some guidelines for responsible backyard chicken keeping, and for the, and that, and that. Thank you.
Former council president and councilman-elect John Manning. While he's come to the podium, I'd also like to recognize councilman-elect Michael Marino, councilman-elect Don Botson, councilwoman-elect Sarah O'Leary, when she's still here. Yes?
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to speak on two ordinance, the chicken coop ordinance and the recent fire pension. John Manning, one of the women who dragged, Cranston, white woman, Cranston resident. On the chicken ordinance, it's kind of contradictory. Not too long ago, you passed an ordinance limiting one-third fee per household. Now you're allowing ten chickens per household. I don't know what came first, the chicken idea, but you know, this is contradictory. I think what you have to do is a little more research on this. It's been mentioned to me about rats, about diseases that chickens bring. Also, it's an enforcement problem with this ordinance, I believe. The dog catcher is responsible for checking chickens in the city of Cranston. Does that mean just the licensed chickens? Or all people raising chickens within the city of Cranston? If that will be the case, do you need a search warrant to go on somebody's property for chickens? Or does the ordinance allow the dog officers to obitrate on someone's property to see if the ordinance is enforced? That hasn't been spelled out as far as licensing in this ordinance. So it's something to think about. On the police and fire pensions, in two thousand and three, Mayor Pong and myself were counseling, we voted for these similar ordinances to the one being presented tonight. Both of those ordinance failed. It spearheaded cost in the city of Cranston thousands and thousands of dollars in legal fees. This is like history repeating itself, we're doing exactly the same thing as we did in two thousand and three. Common sense would say, look for another way. I urge the mayor, I urge this council, and I urge the upcoming council for work with all the parties, firefighters, the police, the representatives, anybody who would sit down at the table and let's work this out in a common sense. Anybody who would sit down at the table and let's work this out in a common sense manner, would now fall and throw thousands and thousands of dollars into a pocket that the taxpayer in this city will never see again. Common sense dictates that reasonable people sitting down, speaking reasonably to each other, can accomplish things. I've always believed that, and I think that we should go in that direction, rather than going to a courtroom and fight this out, and lose all kinds of monies to taxpayers in the city that we, as taxpayers, cannot afford. Thank you very much.
Great Paton and Seven Phoenix Avenue. I'm here to talk about chickens. I'm a chicken owner and co-owner, so we're literally in the same place. With all due respect to Mr. Garabini's research of ten days, I have been researching chickens for much longer. In fact, I educated myself as to how to best raise chickens, and I continue to educate myself. Most people keeping chickens are doing that. We're here tonight to talk about an ordinance that's actually a strong ordinance. Sixty-five percent of American cities today have chicken ordinances, and we're just adding to that number. I encourage you to support this. And I want to address something also that's mentioned tonight, because we are aware that people are concerned about rats. Kim Warren has addressed that. I certainly have seen that you can safely have a chicken coop with the proper precautions, those are all of these ordinance. But I want to address disease, right, we all get pretty worried about that, and to point out that that's one of your main jobs. Microflocks are considered the way to keep chickens safe and healthy. And in fact, things that we hear about avian flu, they don't come from microflocks. They come from large farms where chickens are not cared for, properly. More importantly, microflocks aren't connected to other chickens. If there's an outbreak of any kind of sickness in a flock, it's containable. And what I want to read for you, and also leave you copies of, is a statement from the vet in the Department of, the Department of Environment. The R I D E M, through a cooperative agreement with USDA, provides voluntary surveillance for avian influenza. This surveillance is provided at no charge to the chicken owners. Surveillance animals are taken by the Division of Ag, the Division of Ag Staff. In my tenure as state veterinarian, avian influenza has not been detected in any domestic birds in the state. A few details about avian influenza, and I'll make this brief. AI, in general, is what it's called. Influenza viruses are found in multiple species of animals and humans worldwide. AI comes in two broad categories, highly pathogenic and low pathogenic forms. Low path forms are frequently found in wild birds, particularly migratory waterfowl. The high path forms are thankfully rare and have been found in the USA in years. High path forms are just what their name suggests, highly pathogenic, meaning the birds get very sick and usually die infected. For perspective, though, high path AI is a bird disease, not a human disease. I will leave the rest of the notes with you, in deference to the time I have. But I want to end this by saying that, the bottom line point here, and I'm quoting Scott Marshall, the state veterinarian, the bottom line point here is that AI is a chicken disease, and although animal origin influenza viruses can rarely infect people, backyard chickens have never been associated with large-scale outbreaks of influenza in this country, especially in modern times with the degree of surveillance that is present and the advent of preventive practices. In my opinion, the risk of AI is not a significant factor in consideration of the ordinance to permit the raising of chickens in Cranston. And I might end with a simple comment, but we have lost track of where our food comes from. As you know, Rhode Island is a leader in the local food movement. This is about understanding what is safe for our families. People who choose to raise backyard chickens are choosing a safe form of food. And I believe that is also a part of your job to support, and I encourage you to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Wendy Yeo.
Good evening, my name is Wendy Yeo. I live on Eighty Fourth Street in Cranston. I have a neighbor supporting me in this, and I appreciate them for that. A lot of things have been said today about chickens and their care or not care. Some of the things that need to be understood about our ordinance are that with costs connected with the getting of the licensing permits and things like that, as well as possibly the construction materials, we're not going to be seeing hundreds of chicken coops going up all over the city. Just a quick calculation, is about a spark of $200, and that doesn't include the chickens or the food? So, a lot of people are just going to look at this and go, "I think this is a hogged ground." However, it is for me. I adopted my chickens from friends who were living, they were military, they moved from New York to Fort Riley, Kansas, and could not take them with them. I very quickly put together a coop, and no one in my neighborhood, or my two next-door neighbors even knew they existed until leaves fell off the trees. They don't smell. I have no animal issues connected with them, no rats, no raccoons. And I have seen rats, in my neighborhood, there's a chicken restaurant, I have seen raccoons. There's a living in the sewer down the street. But nothing came and attacked these chickens. I never got sick from them. My friend who had them for eight years never got sick from them. And I don't know anyone who does keep chickens, who has gotten sick from the chickens. I think it's important to understand that those of us who love them, love to take care of them. I take care, took care of my chickens just as well, if not better, than I take care of my cats. Because they need to be protected. They need to be cared for, they need not to be found on the ground where they could pick up something that they should be in contact with. They can't be in contact with wild birds, which are what bring the avian virus, if there is one, around, and we would know about it. I think that the important thing for the council to realize is that this is an activity that is fundamental for our neighborhoods. That its children that lived on my street loved to see these chickens. They loved to walk up and look at them, they could stand there for hours and watch them. And they liked to see the eggs, the blue egg, the green egg, the white egg, the brown egg. And I think that having, for those few of us that will have them, or do have them now, this is an important part of our city culture. My grandparents had chickens on the same lot. And this is just continuing our family tradition. Thank you.
Ryan Brown.
Hi, Ryan Brown, Thirty-Sixth Noah Road, Cranston, Rhode Island. I'm here to be on public, so I don't know how this is going to come. We built a home at Thirty-Sixth Noah Road, and it was a dream come true for us to get it there. And we expected to live our lives there peacefully and enjoy our time. We had several offers over the years to sell the property, and we refused them because we wanted to stay in the City of Cranston, even with the taxes going on. I had heard Mr. Bennett many times throughout my lifetime, and I was very surprised last week when he got up and spoke, and more or less forbade the people before him, saying that he was listening to us, it was like a dream. He has received naydaits on media, and I felt that everyone should be aware of that. And he's living a dream to live peacefully without getting any sideburns on top of the property. Thank you.
Russ Shatner.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Russ Shatner, I live at Forty Fifth Street in Cranston. And I'm here to speak in opposition to ordinance ten thousand twelve five, which is the zone change from nine forty-two to nine fifty, Roseville Avenue. I think there are some other folks that will speak tonight in opposition to this. There are several issues that we're concerned about, not concerned about. The fact that there's already congestion at this location, and the Wendy's, the drive-through restaurant do attract a lot of additional traffic, I'm here with that suggestion. I had that petition that I presented to the ordinance committee last week. Folks, in my neighborhood, it was closed. I submitted that to them, there were twenty-six signatures on that petition that are in opposition to this. The site is small, it does meet the performance standards for drive-through, but it just barely does. And some of the land that meets that requirement is actually unbuildable, because it's a big drop pot, if you've seen the site. You know, one of the things that you load up the site, if you drive down Roseville Avenue, going from, say, the Big Birds South, my block is the first block that you come through that actually has residents on it, on itself. That whole stretch of Roseville Avenue has no homes behind the businesses on the left side, on the pond side. But if you get to the intersection of Noel and Roseville Avenue, then there's a block. And the backside of those blocks are all homes. And I live, probably live in three hundred feet of this proposed change. When I know the restaurants will have, in a C one zone, but drive-throughs are not. And let's face it, this whole issue is about drive-throughs. Seventy percent of the business of a drive-through restaurant is drive-through business, seventy percent of the business. So it really can't exist without drive-through. And they tend to be open very late. Typically, it's the two o'clock in the morning. McDonald's, Jack in the Box are open as late as that. They're a different location, they don't have the same kind of birds as we have in our area. One of the main points of the debate about the support of this zone change, is that the city's comprehensive plan supports this whole stretch going to C four, which would permit a drive-through restaurant. I've done some talking to state planners about this, and believing the council is under no obligation to, to, to really have a comprehensive zone change along that stretch of Roseville Avenue. I would implore you to look at the impacts of drive-throughs on residential uses that are nearby, if you were ever to adopt a zone change along that entire stretch going to C four. Again, I hope that you don't oppose this. The ordinance committee vote three to against. And thank you for your time.
Councilman Will Laxey.
Hi, I'm Sarah Pink, Long Island, Long Island Avenue. I'm speaking in favor of the chicken. I feel like this ordinance is written in a way that requires people to put a lot of effort in building a proper group, and running it for the chickens, one that's predator or rodent group. It is clear that this is not something you take up impulsively, such as impulsively, like somebody forgets a puppy and then have to take care of it. There are serious steps that need to be taken to have some chickens. And that in many ways, allowing people to keep chickens will allow them to fully realize the potential of their property in a very satisfying way. Our chickens are fun and relaxing a lot, pecking and tracking the backyard, eating our people's grass, scraps that would normally just go into the compost where they're free to be eaten by perhaps a rat. I think that there are a lot of other potential rat food sources that are much more difficult to contain than a cheaper food. But anyhow, in fact, it's my enjoyment only, thank you. We enjoy eating the fresh eggs and loved watching our garden grow, with some of the best fertilizer available. Chickens can be allowed to forage in a fenced yard, and they eat the grubs and insects that would be annoying, and they actively fertilize the lawn and the gardens. People with chickens cannot use environmentally harmful pesticides and chemical fertilizers on their lawns where the chickens are free range. This will certainly help to alleviate pollution in Cranston's neighborhood ponds and waterways. And cleaner ponds and waterways make for better property values. And then finally, in a world where we have so many computers and screens and typed and read information, chicken keeping provides a fabulous hands-on education that will also benefit generations to come. We become more aware about what we feed ourselves and the independence we have with our environment. We can see the health of the chickens if they eat the leftovers from our table, and taste the richness of the eggs, these are deep orange yolks. We also see the results of the rich fertilizer the chickens create, and what it does to the flowers and herbs. So I guess that's my argument for chicken keeping, that I also like to stress that the, there's many more food sources that are much more difficult to contain, except as the, the bird feeders, the garbage cans without lids, that the lids blow off, and it takes people a while to get their garbage can lid, and thus the avian loss, and they could, that, come at this from a different direction. Thank you.
Garrett Brown.
Paul Legion. Good evening, Councilman Paul Legion, Fifty-Three Neverson Street. Council, I am here to speak against ordinance ten thousand twelve five, the zone change from nine forty-two to nine fifty, the rest of Roseville Avenue, closed Wendy's. As some of our residents in the area have already stated, I have a few basic concerns concerning this type of C four change. First, current location is C one, it's a office medical building that has traffic until five, six o'clock in the evening. It will hold tight after that, no traffic, traffic until seven. A C four would bring a tremendous amount of additional traffic to the area, seven days a week. And I live on the street, that's about a hundred fifty, and probably a hundred fifty feet away from the proposed C four change. I would be concerned about the additional traffic coming down that street by the one-year-old and for safety. Second would be concerns about pollution. Concern about trash pollution that a C four Wendy's would potentially create. We live against a pond that currently the D E M has basically issued a health warning for cyanobacteria, saying it's dangerous for us to be able to touch the water, pets to be in the water. And I would be concerned that a project like this would additionally cause additional harm to pond. Third would be property values. My property value has taken a hit, just from the economic climate, getting a hundred fifty feet away from a C four establishment that's open seven days a week would hurt my property value even more. And the last thing that I would like to bring up is simply the drive-through, hours of operation. This would be an entire change from the property that's there now. By six o'clock, everybody goes home. Don't you go putting your drive-through. Don't you go putting your drive-through that will be open until two in the morning. And the one thing that none of us can control are the people going through that drive-through at that time, creating noise. Teenagers having opened windows in the summer when the car is two o'clock in the morning. In fact, Wendy's, just like most fast food restaurants advertise that they're open late night. Wendy's had a commercial this year telling them that. And in that commercial, somebody's wearing a order now. That's just something that we as residents who love this property do not need. And I ask that the council vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Melody Castle.
Good evening. My name is Melody Castle, over at Two-O-Six Station Street in Coventry Avenue. We are tonight in, to speak in opposition of the ordinance that the mayor is proposing regarding the changes to the police empire pensions. I retired from the police department in two thousand and six. When I left there, I lived a lot of things. I was able to amuse my education. I obtained a law degree. Actually, I got a legal posse as well. Also retired. But one of the most important things that I got there was my pension. I had joined the police department at the age of six, when there was not a lot of opportunities for men, for even paying for people's work. And one of the things that I joined was to get the benefits that police were awarded me, including pensions, including healthcare. When I left in two thousand and six, I signed papers and I left my role with the city with a valid contract between the city that required the city to pay me a certain amount of money as a pension. Not only did I have a valid contract with the city, but the city council also ratified that contract. When I, who sorts of retirees, you have to submit a request to the department, which goes to the mayor and goes to the city council. Those requests are brought before the city council and you have to vote on it. When my request was brought before the city council, it was unanimous. You agreed to the terms that I was requesting to retire under. Not one of the city council members, I'm sure there are probably anyone here that was there then, raised any types of issues with that. Any types of concerns, any types of problems, any types of issues at all, even though the city knew that there was plenty to be worried about according to the papers, according to Mayor Fund, according to all of the information that we received so far. The changes, I'm sorry, the ordinance that's being proposed today is not only a violation of contract law, it's also a violation of constitutional law. Article twelve, I'm sorry, Article one, section twelve of the Rhode Island Constitution and Article one, section ten of the United States Constitution requires that there is no ex post, ex post facto, I'm sorry, law, be passed in place of contract. What this ordinance that you're attempting to pass tonight is a violation in and of the contract that I have with the city. Now, I understand that there may possibly be a change in this ordinance and the status of it tonight. It does not change my opposition to any changes whatsoever to my pension that I have.
I've got one more name on the sign-up sheet and I have a couple of questions that came up lately. The last person on the list is Joseph Rodeo. Are you going to speak, Mr. Rodeo?
No, I withdraw.
Okay, the three requests. Two, one is on the zone change, one is supportive of a, an application for D V. The third is from Mayor Fund. Mayor Fund wishes to address the council on the public comments. We're just going to thank you for your indulgence. Tonight, as you know, there are two passionate audiences from nine twelve one and nine twelve two. But tonight, it comes to my attention that enough retirees are, or may be willing, to discuss a resolution to our pension issue to make negotiations a feasible option for saving pension benefits and possibly correcting the city's fiscal issues. In light of this development, I would withdraw the two passionate audiences, nine twelve one and nine twelve two, from the council's current consideration to afford negotiations and opportunity to proceed to commence meaningful negotiations. And I thank you for your indulgence at this time. Thank you, Mayor. The last request was John Ennis.
Council President and members of the council, I am speaking in behalf of my colleague, Garrett Brown, in opposition to the Wendy's drive-through zone change. I'm just note that this matters before you told me earlier, up the street, there was a restaurant, and what it means to be a public at that time. No real change other than a little bit of a location, a little bit of knock-down, a facility, and extra space. Ian has proposed not reviving the, several businesses in which have digital tax. Ian, after the tax, give us a tax case, give us a digital business analysis to see what results in higher taxes for residents and an office building with a number of offices for Wendy's drive-through building, which is rather smaller than the existing building. I would suggest that the, if you're not fully aware, look at documents, you'll see that there's approximately forty-five foot rock over forty feet right behind the building, broken with a bond, right in the middle of it, behind which is a residential neighborhood. I do not believe that this is a vision by this body when you voted the change a few months ago regarding the comprehensive plan issue inclusion in the entire strip of C four drive-throughs adjacent to the residential neighborhoods. Like, the ground is obviously affected more than anybody, a look at the orthographical map. Those provided in conjunction with this application, anything, there's wetlands on the far end of the parcel and trees and a significant slope through the water. It suggested that you have a little more of so-called sopia checks on it after the fact, if you vote on it. However, if I follow the analogy that was discussed earlier today, once the box is untried, you can't get them out of the garage, it's almost totally the first rule, we would be able to answer, as did the council did previously, and this council did earlier in the year. Thank you.
Jeffrey Michelson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. Jeffrey Michelson, my office is located at seven four five Fort Worth Road, North East Town, Rhode Island. I'll be great. I'm here today representing Bonefish Grill, which has applied for a D V, a restaurant liquor license for the new location of Chapel, new development. And I am grateful that we received a positive recommendation from the state we services licenses community. So I want to add, Bonefish is part of O S I Restaurant Partners, which operates Opak Steak Houses, Corradas, Bonefish Grill, Loomin's Prime Steak House, and Roy's. So they currently have Corradas and Outback. And the plan is in Rhode Island, this is the first Bonefish Grill that we have, a casual restaurant. I think it will be a positive addition to the program and I hope we can get a new license. Thank you.
Okay, that is public hearing, for those of the people that signed up. We'll get on to the resolutions, sections, pre-resolutions. The season we spent on Rule thirty-four B, where a resolution is normally introduced and referred to committee of public hearing, has already been habitified with South Carolina this evening. Is there a?
The public hearing resolution is scheduled for the Public Works Committee on the thirteenth at the end of October, it's forwarded to the municipal council in Maryland. It's listed on our public hearing sessions on tonight's topic, the only speaker to see the, some of the proceedings actually.
So is there a motion to spend Rule thirty-four B? Motion second, but please take the call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. And on your resolution. Motion second, any discussion?
Just a comment, I want to thank Johnson and Wales for the, the opportunity to work with you. I mean, we're giving you a piece of property that really doesn't do much for us, but does a lot for you. But then, in the interim, we had the, the agreement on the payment rule package, which was helpful for the city. So it shows that we can work together to move the city forward. Would that please, please take the call on the resolution.
Yes. 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 Finance committee, Councilman Arquero.
Thank you, Council President. The vice president met in a past resolution, authorized, we will say, activated in seven months, you understand, Council President.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Second. Is the motion second and discussion, there be none, please take the call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice President, you understand, the past resolution authorized, we will say, activated in seven months, Council President.
Any discussion? Please take the call.
Yes.
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 Vice President, you understand, the past tax, which showed the rules, as recommended by the city treasurer.
Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second and discussion, there be none, please take the call.
Yes.
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 Vice President, you understand, the past tax, which showed the miles, as recommended by the city treasurer.
Is there a motion? Motion second and discussion, there be none, please take the call.
Yes.
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 Council President, as soon as all workers have been promoted, so that concludes the adoption of the final screen.
Okay, right now, Public Works Committee, the areas listed were all carried over from the November thirteenth agenda, for me, without a little lack of corn. So I thought about the chair to proceed with the areas listed.
Thank you, Council President. We have Fowley, Lennon Supply, it's an appeal. We need Mr. Christian Baum to give us an update regarding discharge levels, that's continued and under discussion for a few months. Several weeks ago, we had a meeting with Fowley Lennon and their attorney. The Fowley Lennon situation is that they're discharging in excess of the industrial permit discharge that gave an issue by the city of Princeton, around our gross weight level or on a period of time. When I met with them, we discovered that they had a plan in place to meter their discharge to our waste voices and spending a ton of money on it. We think that this system will help the problem that they have with the city of Princeton. And they have showed this plan and are keeping us up to date with the implementation of the system. So currently, I would say we're working in a cooperative manner with Fowley Lennon. There's really no reason to proceed on their appeal. I think they're satisfied, we're satisfied that they're spending a lot of money on the discharge system, or feel that's going to be beneficial to both parties. Thank you, Mr. Christian Baum. Is there a motion to remove the Fowley Lennon's supply, the appeal, or any future? So moved. The first, the second? All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Any votes? See none? Next, we have Wayland, situated in the Free's Avenue Traffic Improvements. It's administration report is what we're asking for here, with the administration, some of the administration here, who looks at the plan on this.
Yes, Councilman, this is what you can hear right now. Okay. With discussions with Council President Lupino, right now, I'll be really looking for on this issue, is it made certain or committed by P O P that they are going to proceed this spring with the construction? And I have informed a email dated November fourteenth from P O P, that said that they have an estimated notice to proceed date. Now, what that means, those proceedings, they will go off for a bit for the construction portion of this project in February of thirteen, with their intention of beginning construction as early in spring as they're allowed, which is normally capable. So I think this is about to move, is it made certain?
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Rhode Island Yacht Club property reconfiguration motion avenue C wall. This was requested by Councilman Sykos, and this is administration report as well. Mr. Fordy?
Yes, sir, if I may. There is a meeting scheduled with representatives of the Rhode Island Yacht Club area of residents that's going to be held at Rhode Island Yacht Club to cover a number of issues, including this issue as far as the property reconfiguration. And that meeting is scheduled for December eighth.
Thank you. Next, we have, again, another report of the administration asked, requested by Council Sykos, this is a report regarding the use of open space bonds to acquire land near Lake Nightwood to use as a walking path and trail. Mr. Fordy?
Councilman Sykos, myself and the planning have looked at this on investigations, perhaps that Councilman Sykos would like to address it.
Councilman Sykos? I think this is a work in progress, and I don't think we have anything to report. Next, we have Surry Drive and Belvedere, administration report on ground floor issues. This was requested by Council President Lupino. Mr. Fordy?
Yes, sorry, I pulled it up, I didn't have the folder on app compared to, this is standing water issue, if I remember correctly, Councilman. It is, you had requested a estimate on what it would take to reconstruct that intersection, which is the only resolution to the standing water issue. And the engineering department issued a, understand, a ballpark estimate of about twenty thousand dollars. Now, even if we were to be able to identify these funds and flow through ahead, it couldn't be done before spring at this point.
Thank you. That concludes the public versus agenda.
I have a request on the Wayland situated in the Free's Avenue Traffic Improvements to add this item to the March two thousand and thirteen document for public works to update, because that's the visit.
Because that's, they visited with, put this out in February or so, given the following month. But just as a reminder for the future councils for the standings. So that would be my request to the chair, add this to the document for March 2013.
Okay, that was the Wayland, Situate, and Phoenix Avenue Traffic Improvements. In this period of update.
Thank you.
Orders committee, Councilman Arquero?
Orders met in, passed by, passed by four to go four years and, I'm sorry, four years, one and one cent ago. Orders I dash four dash three, amendments to six, chapter four, for the City of Cranston, two thousand five, and five animals generally, as amended 11/19/2004. Chicken orders.
Is there a motion? Second. Is the motion the second? Any discussion? Councilman Sykos?
I'd like to make a couple of general comments and then offer amendment. The, this ordinance has run through two public hearings prior to tonight. Extensive amendment and extensive, pretty extensive research, looking at ordinances in other cities to ensure that the, their chickens will be in a healthy situation, that they won't be rat problems to the maximum extent possible, and to allow people to produce some of their own food in their backyards. There are a couple of comments I wanted to address that people made. One of them was about, I guess the main one was about the safety of food, and the word salmonella was tossed around. Chickens are sourced of salmonella, and if you're dumb enough not to wash your eggs and not to cook them, you might get salmonella. I think when people have to do the food, is they have to, they have to treat it safely. If all of us are familiar with the practice of adding cow dung or to a garden, or chicken dung or to a garden, if you do that improperly, you can also get sick. If you have a toddler who's in diapers, and you change the toddler's diapers in the middle of your backyard garden, and then go back to gardening, you can get E. coli poisoning. So there are a lot of ways to get sick, and food has to be handled, handled properly. I think we heard in the, the committee here, and we heard from the Rhode Island Division of Agriculture, that strongly endorsed this proposal. We heard in form of a letter from the Rhode Island State Veterinary, who endorsed the proposal. So the people who are really very knowledgeable about chickens and the health of food, the safety of food, have endorsed this, this type of proposal. The in committee, there was one issue that was, was left open. And that has to do with line 39 in the ordinance. And that says that you can have one hen per 800 square feet of open lot area. And I think for, for people who were at that hearing, remember that we really weren't able to figure out why the mayor's office was seeking to include the word open lot area rather than just lot area. And I spent some time today talking with both the building inspector, who was the source of that, and getting some information from the City of Providence. The 800 square feet, that was my first question, is where did that come from? That comes from the Providence ordinance. And the planning department in Providence told me that a lot of lots in Providence, smaller lots, are 3,200 square feet. And the drafters of the ordinance wanted those property owners to be able to have four chickens as a minimum. So they took 3,200, and they divided by four, and they came up with 800. That's not a number that no one's going to have four chickens in 3,200 square feet of yard. The way that the ordinance is written, with the protection of a hardware, a hard rear wire against rodents, and the rung has to be covered with mesh to protect the chickens from hawks or raccoons that could climb in. No one's going to cover that size of an area to protect their, their chickens. So that's, it's not a standard for the size of the coop or the rung. That's how they came up with the 800 feet. So if you went into the City of Providence, and you had a 3,000 square foot lot, and you wanted to have chickens, you could only have three chickens. But if you had a larger lot, you could have more. So that's where the 800 came from. I talked to Mr. Michael, who's building inspector, about his concerns and the use, why he put the word open in. And he said his concern was that the entire backyards did not get filled with buildings. We do have in our code, in the building code, that a certain, you have to have a certain number of, a certain percentage of your lot has to be open space. You have a, you cannot fill your whole backyard with a garage, for instance. And for a small lot, that's 30%. In Cranston, a small lot, Mr. Michael said, is generally about 6,000 square feet. And there are some that are about 5,000 square feet that are below code that grandfathered in. So what we talked about, and what we came up with as a solution to this, was changing the 800 to 1,000, and then removing the word open. And then, so what, way that would function, is you have a lot size, you have your, your lot size, which you could divide by 1,000. And that would be technically the number of chickens you could raise on your lot, up to a maximum of 10. Then, at that point, the, you also have to consider the, for a 6,000 square foot lot, and really for any lot up to 20,000 square feet, 30% of the land area has to be open. So if you were proposing, when you went into the building inspector's office with your plans, to build a coop that made the percentage of open space below 30%, the building inspector would say, you can't build that coop. So you have to either modify the coop, or you wouldn't have to have chickens. So just to give an example, someone who had a large pool, had a 6,000 square foot lot, and had a pool in the backyard and a garage, you're probably not going to have room to have a chicken coop. You'll have to decide what, what issue wanted in your backyard, but that'd be a minimal amount of land open. I'm just saying, I gotta breathe a pill here. Okay, informed by the, the City Council's attorney that if an ordinance is amended, that it has to be then re-advertised and voted on a second time. It has to be voted on first, and then voted on a second time, or?
The chair, it has to be re-advertized, it has to have a new public hearing that deals with the words of the amendments, and has to be published in a paper. So if it is amended, it cannot be voted on tonight without re-advertising and bringing it back to a, another public hearing.
Although we amended it, that, that can be done in committee, but it cannot be done.
That's correct. What, what a clarification. If I may. This, this passes through committee, passes through the council, and becomes an ordinance. It can be reintroduced with amendments after that.
Well, I, I'm headed in the same direction you are. I was not aware of this provisional amendment, and I would thank, thank the, Mr. Quinnl for pointing that out. Well, anyway, we've got to learn a lot about 800 square feet, 1,000 square feet, while I babble like.
Any, any other discussion? Councilman Biggio?
Thank you, Council President. I've had quite a few phone calls about this issue. I was so much surprised at, but I did get quite a few phone calls. And while I'm sympathetic to the, to people that look like they really do take care of their chickens, and they act responsibly, my big concern, the people that do not do it properly, were the proliferation of chicken coops. I think that we have such a problem with minimal housing, we're trying to maintain the properties that we have now. To add another burden to Mr. Michael's day, I think is going to be very, very difficult. I think we, I've had quite a few problems with rat problems, even of the Pontiac Avenue. Many of my neighbors have called me concerning this issue, and I have to say that 100% of them are against it. So I feel like I have an obligation to my constituents, who were 100% against, that I would have to vote against this, because I just think that we've had some serious issues with rats, and they're, they're subject to predators, but we've seen hawks and foxes, even in, even in Glenwood neighborhood. It's a characteristic problem in Cleveland as well. So I'm definitely going to vote against this.
Councilman Arquero?
Thank you, Council President. I was the only neighbor in committee, I asked some issues of this. First of all, we said representative of three, which has a definite severe rat problem we've been addressing, and that's why I choose those social furriers. I just think this is not the proper time for the city to pass a chicken coop ordinance. As we said, chickens must be fed, and they'll be fed bird feed or chicken feed. It's going to spread around the ground, and rats, you're going to borrow under the coop, they'll borrow food of the coop. Also, you will draw wild animals, you'll draw raccoons, you'll draw coyotes, coyotes, hairy rabies. One of the first birds to come down with bird flu, bird flu virus, are chickens, if they're not properly kept. I know there's a lot of constituents out in the ordinance who are diligent in that matter. But it's, to reiterate, Councilman Biggio, there's plenty of individuals who have chickens, who are just not careful chickens. They're going to put everyone else at risk in parallel. Also, fiscal note, what is this going to cost? I just can't enforce this. It's going to be the animal control officer. Well, we're funding that budget, and that person is overwhelmed at this time. Now we've got inspections involved. Inspections have been overwhelmed because of the economy, because the phone's being foreclosed. Many vacant homes out there, malls aren't being cut, windows are being broken, properties haven't been maintained, and our inspection department is working overwhelmed. This is just going to activate a group, for many reasons, and I can go on and on and on. Providence and their ordinance has a maximum of six chickens. For some unknown reason, Cranston wants a maximum of eight chickens. I just don't agree with that. So I'll be voting against this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Council President tomorrow, somebody got a hold of you so I can speak. You can stay down, just, just here, if you want, whatever. I didn't support this in, in committee, and I would continue to support this. I think it was a well-crafted ordinance. We added some teeth to the provisions about the construction of the coops, which is very important. They are, need to be, if constructed under this rodent proof and predator proof. I think it's going to, I, I agree with some of the people saying that it's a good source of, not only food source, but education for those people that will raise chickens. And I don't think it's going to create the abuses that some of the other council people have alluded to, because I think people that are going to spend the time to do this properly will, will benefit from it, and I think will, will give us if we can do something like this. So I will support this. That being said, Councilman Darni?
Thank you, Council President. It's not often that I disagree with my esteemed colleague from White City, Councilman Biggio, and I have received a number of phone calls on this, in fact, compared to the pension ordinances, on the first of all, calls on council chickens. And it's been interesting to hear the different perspectives. I do agree with Council President Lupino that it's a well-written ordinance, that it's been through a number of revisions, and I recommend and sponsor Councilman Sykos for doing a good job with this. I think the reality is that families are moving in the direction of raising their own food. That's happened. And there are pickings being raised in the City of Cranston right now. I disagree respectfully with, with Councilman-elect John Manning that this ordinance is in direct conflict or is contradictory to the ordinances around bird abuse and rats. Because what I think this ordinance does do, is it creates a set of parameters under which households can raise chickens, and empowers the city, when there's an issue in the neighborhood, whether that's rats or other animals, to be able to hold households accountable if they're not maintaining their chickens in healthy health. So this, a movement is happening, and I think we probably do need to codify in some way in the city how we expect families to care for these animals and to raise them. And it's my hope that this will not put undue stress on the building inspector's office. So after much consideration and several phone calls, I am going to support this ordinance.
That being said, no further discussion, please take the floor. I'm sorry, Councilman Darni?
Thank you, Council President. I do want to be supportive of this ordinance, and I've heard the public hearings, and the, I do, I mean, I have nothing against chickens, so I mean, I think if families want to keep chickens, and I know for one, I'm not, I consider myself a regular person, and I have family, but I'm not going to bring up chickens, and there are people that want to have that ability to do it. And I think it's a good ordinance, a lot of work has been put into it. It's been amended, the administration has had a lot of input with this ordinance. So I am going to support this ordinance.
Any further discussion? There be none, please take the floor.
I'll play more.
Councilor McCallum? No. Councilor McCallum?
Yes. Yes.
Councilor Arquero?
No.
Councilor Luchy? Yes.
No.
Councilor Vivia?
No.
Councilman Arquero?
Yes. Yes. Motion passed as five to four. 10, 12, 4, ordinance amendment of 2010, the comprehensive plan for the City of Cranston, efficient community and use of that neighborhood commercial services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Is the motion the second, any discussion? Councilman Sykos?
People have answered questions on this, people have, basically, it's an effort to align the comprehensive plan with current use on Forward Avenue and Broad Street. Currently, the comprehensive plan has the entire script.
Currently, the comprehensive plan has the entire script of those streets designated as commercial, where there's a mixture of commercial and residential. And what this does is alter the comprehensive plan to make the sites that are residential residential, and the sites that are commercial, commercial.
Any further discussion? David, please take the roll.
Councilman Chao?
Yes.
Councilman Doni?
Yes.
Councilman Sykes?
Yes.
Councilman Akel?
Yes.
Councilman Luji?
Yes.
Councilman Pivio?
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez?
Yes.
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 Next other document, Council President, is only ten, that's called F five, ordinance amendment chapter seventeen, goes to Branson, two thousand and five, by the zone, nine forty-two, and then you can go to four hours, so machine, this is the nine, one, three, four, eight, and two eight, I believe.
The motion is the second. Any discussion? Councilman Montell?
The first testimony is important to the, I notice, pick, about, comply against this. However, I think we need to reassess this with the economy and this bringing businesses here to Branson, creating jobs, also, if a new business is founded in Branson, it will help with the past structure and more businesses will pay to the, to the city. So we need to assess this in poor economic terms, I want to encourage businesses to come here to Branson and operate.
Councilman Pivio?
Thank you, Council President. Questions from the chair, and I may do the sponsor. If you'd, Mr., I guess this is the one that's getting one left here. Just a quick question on the noise issue. Are there technologies or other new avenues to stop the noise that you get from the drive-throughs?
I don't know if you saw the micro, or the sound noise.
Did you get a question?
Yeah, you were asking about the noise.
Oh, yes, the future of noise.
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Bennett earlier about that, he had mentioned that there are new systems that are out there now, digital, so it's not the speakers that you have here from years ago. You hear from miles and miles, it's really just directed towards that person to their speaking to. So it's really not, and I cannot hear it from thirty miles, or thirty feet away, and it's going to be one of those tighter systems that directs the sound.
Do they have any kind of like a cone or something to also deflect?
They have a board that's actually aligned it, so that's going to actually deflect. And then all sound goes directly towards where the person's making the order. So that's, it's a digital system, so I get that what you're saying, is it directs it in one movement, doesn't disperse the sound.
My only other comment is that there's other issues, we're back to the time of closing, or the lower, that would be cleared by safety services. But we have, the council would still have control of some of the issues that are asked by the neighbors. But I think all in all, this is a tremendous offer of this property, and I think it's a good thing the city can hopefully build the neighbors to the residents. But it doesn't look like there's very many residential homes directly in contact with that property, so I'm going to say yes.
Any other comment? Councilman Navarro, I can be recognized, I can speak, and I'm going to vote in support of this. I wouldn't characterize a great public operator on this. There was some, there was some people, you see me, that spoke against it. You cannot have a business anywhere on Reservoir Avenue from the property's line to guide the city without the business in some way directly affecting the neighborhood. However, when the operator did his homework, realized the impact of his first location, and moved it south to an area that is going to impact a lot less people. Anytime you open a business, there are always the issues of increased traffic. But that's the, that's the things that we have to weigh when we, when we talk about increasing the business climate in the city, opportunities for our young people to work after school, and to help to support the economy. So I would be voting to approve this, with the assurance is that it still has to go through a process. My only request to the operator is that I would like to see Wendy's become, or start a new trend on Reservoir and put up a small tasteful sign. Maybe we could, you know, be the new innovators on Reservoir Avenue, and get rid of these big giant signs that they want, a small tasteful sign, because as much as CBS insists that they need that big logo, it's a destination situation. You go there because you know it's here, you don't need a big sign or anything, so I would vote this, my suggestion, that be something that they bring forward in the future areas. That being said, David, back, any other discussion? Councilman Sykes?
I'll be voting against this proposal. Major reason I'll be voting against it is that I've picked up a lot of trash in my life, and I know a lot of that trash comes from drive-throughs and fast food restaurants. They may be able to police the site, but the surrounding neighborhood, I think, will suffer from trash as people eat their food and throw this out the window. Also, I would dispute the claim that this is going to generate tax revenue. I think it's probably, looking at the building, it's probably pretty close to awash. We collect property tax, and we have some buildings on the property now that are going to be removed and replaced with a new building, and I bet would be the values of property is about the same. As for the hours, I think that having sponsored a proposed ordinance to give the Safety Services Committee a lot of authority in setting hours, and then having that blow up in committee, because of state law, I would say we're severely restricted on how we can limit hours. So I don't think that, I don't think there's going to be a lot of relief this council can give on hours of open.
Councilman Montell?
Thank you for the second chance, Council. I think most of this testimony directed my, what I can say. I just want to kind of rebut my colleague, and the numbers as far as property taxes, we really don't know what the numbers are, so that was an opinion from my colleague. We don't know if it's going to be a wash, or if it's going to be a loss or gain. The fact is, the building will be utilized, people will be employed, and it will be economic activity from Reservoir Avenue, you can't deny that. Secondly, and we mentioned trash, one of the partners involved is Javi Bennett, a native of Branson, born here, his family did wonders in hockey, Branson Hockey Leagues. They're very concerned with Branson, with the neighborhood, and during his testimony in front of the ordinance committee, he was, you know, definitely said that he would police the area and make sure that the area was clean, and I will take his word on that. And I will keep, make sure I keep and have his word on, I promise, thank you.
Any other discussion? David, one last, I'm sorry, Councilman Doni?
Thank you, Council President Quinlan. I voted against the zoning change in committee, largely because of the hours of the drive-through that I would anticipate being in place. And that is, I don't think my tenure on the council, but actually, after listening to the arguments of Councilman Pivio, and realizing that our purview is not necessarily to engage in the functions of a planning commission, but really just to uphold the intent of the comprehensive plan. I am very concerned about the implications of the drive-through in the neighborhood, but feel that after listening to Councilman Pivio's argument on it, that this body can't engage in that analysis, it has to happen in the right venue. So I actually am changing my vote to support the zoning change to C four.
Any discussion, Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Council President. I'm not going to be supporting the proposed zone change directly, you know, this is, he proposed in the area that I represent. So I'm very familiar with the Reservoir Avenue neighborhood, the homes, as a matter of fact, I live quite far from there, and from back, or not, or... And the main, the main reason is the intense use that is being proposed there, which, which they've come forward and, you know, with Wendy's, but the main, the main deterrent there, the main impact that it's going to have is the drive-through. So there's plenty of all the businesses, and there's a C four zone that will allow, which also allows for a drive-through, but they might tell you with the council for six years, I've dealt with a lot of drive-through issues, and you can't predict, you know, what the traffic is going to be. I mean, we have engineers, we have, you know, all those studies, and I'm not discounting that, but you can't account for every, every situation, not every situation is the same, not every patient is the same. So I'm going to, you know, so just the fact that it's a drive-through, and they may ask for operation at two in the morning, which could be allowed, so I just think it would be very adversely to the neighborhood, and you guys are going to be trapped, so I'm going to be voting against it. It sounds like, you know, I'm not going to, you know, both are here to pass it, so I just want to add one other, one other comment regarding the zone changes and the way it's being handled by the city, by the state body. And in our rules, when something gets denied in committee, and if it gets denied, it dies in committee, this is, this was where, this happened before, and the other zoning change, with the Reservoir Avenue, and in another area with Wendy's, and then it came that state law requires that this be voted on by the full council, so it supersedes our, our, our rules. So, you know, for a matter of transparency, and for the incoming council, I'm just going to just, you know, I would hate to think that residents think that, oh, it failed the committee, but look what happened, now, now it's, and the whole council of the past, how did that happen? So I just want to make sure that, you know, we implement the proper advertising for zoning specifically, because state law requires that any denials to zone change have to vote before a full council. I just don't know if there's advertising in place for that, because I know specifically we've got to contact people to make sure they were here at this meeting. So I don't know if there's any other advertising that goes, goes before to the people that it affects in order to be here in front of the full council on a denial, because if it was denied in committee. So there's a lot of state law involved with this. I just hope that we followed it, and that the proper advertisement was done, and that that has taken place, because that's the only reason why I can force, because state law, and it was denied in committee. Other than that, with any other issue with safety, I just want to make sure of transparency and future notice, because that's all we're going to get, the new council is going to get, is zone changes from now on, because that's going to, you know, enforce the comprehensive plan. But I just want there to be something in place to protect the residents of the neighborhood's current impact.
Any other discussion? David, just one last comment. We don't know if Mr. Sykes was correct as far as it being awash, but if we just assume that it is, if you assume that it's awash, let's not forget the impact fees, or the meal taxes, which will be generated by this proposal. That being said, please take the roll.
Councilman Luja?
Yes.
Councilman Doni?
Yes.
Councilman Sykes?
No.
Councilman Akel?
Yes.
Councilman Luji?
Yes.
Councilman Soren?
Yes.
Councilman Pivio?
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez?
No.
Councilman Luji?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to pass is? Safety services, what?
Council President, ordinance nine, twelve, four, title ten, chapter thirty-two, goes to the city of Branson, two thousand and five, there are no days of traffic, stop at mine, and overfill this table for a traffic report. There should be a traffic report in your packages. I didn't get any, any, sending votes out to Council President, I have some passing. Any further standing, Council President?
Yes.
Anything?
For jab or lump?
Jab.
What, I don't know. And, okay, given that no, every city, more criteria that satisfy, and create safety hazards during icy weather conditions, some engineering judgment guides, staff do not recommend approval of this ordinance.
Council President, name your answer. There are speeding issues on Branson Street, there are speeding issues around the lake, there are cut crews going through the lake, there's speeding issues all around the Shandit area. This area, there's a blind hill, and they're speeding up the hill, there's kids in the area. There's issue won't approve for Shandit, as far as, which was, and this is just, I have informed you, I'm not a good enough staff, as you know myself, but we do have an issue. I have already told the administration on it, as a matter of fact, it's on my council and the communication about the Branson Street power project, so there's an issue there, the people spoke a lot, and later when I was campaigning, they said it's a problem. We need to fix it. I move passage.
So the motion is the second, and I have a chance to read the traffic energy recommendation. With that being said, please take the roll.
Councilman Luja?
No.
Councilman Doni?
Yes.
Councilman Sykes?
Yes.
Councilman Akel?
Yes.
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 Ordinance ten, twelve, one, ordinance amendment table twelve, chapter thirty-two, goes to the city of Branson, two thousand and five, there are no days of traffic, no parking, weekday, spray avenue.
Motion to approve?
It would have been amnesty, Council President.
Motion to approve is the second. Any discussion, but if you don't vote, please take the roll.
Councilman Luja?
Yes.
Councilman Doni?
Yes.
Councilman Sykes?
Yes.
Councilman Akel?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Ordinance ten, twelve, two, ordinance amendment table ten, chapter thirty-two, goes to the city of Branson, two thousand and five, there are no days of traffic, food trucking prohibited on Erka Street, Bash Street, Brit Street, Funnels Street, State Street, Tweet Street. Council President, this was drafted along the administration's, even though they drafted, this is an issue with the trucks that are supposed to stay on foot travel, coming through the side streets, riding on people's front horns, breaking street lights. This will hopefully keep them on foot travel, which is plenty large enough for them to make their turns, and I approve, again, two ninety-five, et cetera, et cetera. So again, I'm in passage. I don't have a written report, Marissa, you're my colleague on this today, so. Councilman May, I'm your book? Council President?
Well, again, it's sort of graphic, I don't think we could afford.
Okay.
The motion is second, any, any discussion, and Luke, do you take the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Marissa, but you have all ten. Uh, lastly, all of our replacements, newbies, all of the cat, um, render the D E eight shot fourteen sixty-one handle, who were recommended, uh, I A three passengers.
So, second. Is the motion a second, any discussion? There being none, Luke, do you take the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
There's the Beaver Pub and Grub, two eighty-eight Avenue Avenue, who recommended.
Second. Is the motion a second, any discussion, but if you're not, Luke, do you take the roll?
Yes.
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 Bonefish Grill LLC, thousand, Chapter U, you can end this group like a passive.
I would, I would you to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion, but if you're not, Luke, do you take the roll?
Yes.
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 My L Restaurant Group D E eight restaurant, who are the super raw recommendation, uh, has turned to the bonus and called a comment, uh, we, uh, this is going to be effective December first of two thousand twelve as the previous license has not been used or we cannot make this effective until December one. So, it was referred our recommendation to make sure that, uh, all the teething across the night. December first.
Root, root, next part.
It was, it was referred from committee because it was a question raised of whether or not there were any issues with D V R because it was the previous license of application. I communicated with D V R sending forth the back pattern with regard to the, uh, license that was consistent in the new license application. They responded in an email saying that there was no issue in, in proceeding with the new application there. Um, and with abundance of caution, we approvals effective December first, which is when the current license is, um, expires on the third year. And that email was forwarded to the full council.
Also, Council President, uh, let's not start with, um, also, some specific one only, uh, there's legal issues if we pass it before December first. So, we have to reiterate that it has to be December first.
So, the motion will be, uh, I'm taking a motion to approve effective December first, two thousand twelve. There's one last second. Is the motion a second, any discussion? There being none, Luke, do you take the roll?
Yes.
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 And also, we have, Council President, his eviction license for the same corporation, I have asked. Uh, Council President, before we vote on, uh, eviction license, it's upon ten, twelve, three, ten, twelve, four. Uh, this is again, he's, uh, first, I'm off these models. But, uh, I'm in pass it on the eviction license note.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion, but if you're not, Luke, do you take the roll?
Yes.
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 That's all I have, Council President.
Claims are ready, uh, Councilman Cyclos.
These are, uh, two claims listed that were settled by the owners of the claims.
Fine. Okay, we had a settled claim. Is there a motion?
Counsel, put here.
This is open to any matters, uh, that are not under body. Is anyone wishing to address? All right, everybody's coming down, so just walk around. All right, so don't want to speak on any, uh, non-adjacent items. Election of city officials, we have probate judge advisory commission. The first one is, uh, Michael Palatton, Estway, appointed appointment. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion is second. Any discussion, but if you're not, Luke, do you take the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So, yes. Uh, we have questions on the reappointments, are they wishing to be reappointed?
Please disregard those questions, Council President.
Okay, so on the reappointments, we have...
I haven't heard back from the, the draft that Doc had was done, it's something they did confirm their interest and I'm going to turn it aside.
Okay, so, uh, we'll take those both together, John Ennis, Estway, and Stephen Levate. Estway for reappointment to the probate judge advisory commission, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion, but if you're not, Luke, do you take the roll?
Yes.
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 Uh, executive communications, report requiring special counsel to pursue the chapter session fifty and five, there are any reports. There are reports should be in your votership? Everyone told?
There is a, uh, private meeting. We have a, uh, a request for, yes, sir. Uh, past and hired Lieutenant Walter Povasky has requested to continue in service for one year. Uh, Lieutenant Povasky is not all necessary requirements, and we have urged you to approve.
Is there a motion?
So, moving second.
Motion is second, any discussion? There being none, do you take the roll?
Uh, yes.
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 Yes. Under, uh, Council President Communications, uh, status updated in city order, from this round.
Thank you, Council President. Um, the other, I'll have a, a further update, actually, on December four. The, uh, the Order Committee is meeting on December four. Uh, at that time, radio P C R orders will have a draft of both the city and the schools officially into all its performance. And, uh, that will be forwarded on to the finance committee and then hopefully forwarded on to the full council. And, uh, as you know, they will be submitted to the Order General by the end of this, uh, end of December. So, we're on schedule, we're, uh, probably will have schedules, which they, uh, they show you that next Tuesday night or maybe tomorrow, they will have the update for the Order Committee, which is open to the public.
Uh, Councilmember Communications, Councilman Sam Rhea.
All right, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to ask, um, on a little report, we didn't get the hour rates we usually get. I don't know if that was, uh, Mr. Prin, I don't see it in here. With the, uh, what we get.
Okay, I don't have the report with me, I will, uh, check the solicitors office tomorrow and get that to send out the issue.
I can choose to email for this if you want, or you don't have to.
Actually, uh, it should be on there, you should, you should...
I don't have it online. That's okay, if you have a copy, I'll just grab it later.
I should, I, one more.
I do not have one, Council President. Well, um, I just wanted to ask about the Cranston Street power project. I know they mentioned it earlier in staff's request, um, and there's an issue, uh, about the Carlos on. So, you said it was going to be immediate of the, uh, some of the residents?
Yes, sir, the, uh, the design phase right now is approaching the thirty percent completions condition stage. And once that's achieved, there will be a public meeting, which we were hoping for December, but it may drift into January, but it will be for the rest of yesterday.
Okay. Um, I just have a couple more I could add on, Council President, real quick. All right, we'll be real quick. November seventeenth, uh, Jerry and I talked about this already, it was a Saturday, and a couple of home close people up near Stonehill School, their water was shut off. Um, one physician told me he was told that, oh, he didn't get the, the notice, uh, shutting off the water between ninety-three. I, I called the administration, um, Jerry was away, um, Carlos knew nothing about it, and the highway superintendent knew nothing about it, which is probably the big issue here. Um, another physician was told it was an emergency, there was a leak, and that they just opened up the highway and did it. So, I got conflicted before the utility. My concern is that I still feel that they tell the administration what's going on. Because every time I call John or Carlos, they go nothing about it. So, who are they telling that they're doing these things? And if they're looking for reports, I can understand because you talk to people, you get different reports. Back in August, it was a Saturday, I, I didn't know who to call, and their water was off. Now, one guy says, you're supposed to get a report, they never got anything, so they won't prepare.
Uh, if I could respond, okay? Uh, generally speaking, I, I was out of town when that call came in. I did text the public works director, who reached out to Providence Water, okay? Now, there wasn't a, a lot of detailed information flowing back to me because I was out of town. But I got to the same impression that this was an emergency, it was not planned. Uh, Providence Water has been very diligent as of late as far as holding the proper permits and giving proper notices. So, that this would fall into one, one or two categories. Either it was an emergency or there was an oversight as far as pulling the permit. Uh, I have not determined that yet.
Can you check that out, Luke?
I certainly can.
And also, just one quick thing, Madison Street, the truck's still flying down the street, working with Steve Montagian, trying to find out where to deliver it to, when they can go through Walter, you know, it's the same old story. Um, they're still going down the street, and they're not all going to be the same business.
If you'll read my comments on this, uh, is this not the, the, the one-way of traffic ordinance? Or is it, I'm sorry, not one-way, but, uh, no through traffic ordinance that was, uh, just voted on once?
No, that was, um, old by Fletcher, this is old by Madison.
Okay.
All right, they're supposed to go through.
There's a specific route, yes.
By Walter. Unless they deliver it to a place.
Right.
But they're not, from where I'm hearing, they're not, they're just flying down that street.
The, the routine deliveries that go in there, we have gotten commitments from the companies that they would follow the route, and that had been our experience. So, I would suggest short of posting a police officer out there to identify who these people are, uh, that they have to be ran.
Okay. Uh, hold that, thank you, Council President.
Uh, thank you, Council President, I have just two, um, room cases. Excuse me, blue glasses? You still have, no, the whole glasses, they're broken. Um, I, I requested from the clerk, she put on the dock, uh, made sure I had my board thirty-seven Bain Street, but evidently not the dock, so I'm going to take it up, uh, with Mr. Cordy, uh, this evening. Uh, Jerry, I had a number of calls about thirty-seven Bain Street, it's a foreclosed home, Bain Street home, the neighbors have seen homeless individuals going in and out. Basically, the neighbors who like that home's secured, uh, windows locked, and the doors secured so people can't enter. What's the status on that, if any, do you know about it?
Yes, sir, I do. Uh, first of all, the building inspector's office has been very actively pursuing this property for some time. So, uh, that, that's why in the face of the allegations of not doing that thing.
I never said that. I just, I said, are you aware of the situation? The feedback I receive as the neighbors, where it's unexpected, Smith, Inspector Smith who's dragging his feet on the issue, that's, that's the word I got from the neighbors. But continue.
Okay, thank you, sir. As, uh, Councilman Pivio has, has, I mentioned numerous times, we've worked very hard as far as these, uh, abandoned homes, as far as closed homes, trying to work our way through the legal maze. Uh, fortunately, in this case, we were able to get the bank to agree last Friday to hire a contractor to secure that home now that whoever living there is gone. They reportedly had moved out, so now they can move in, board on the secured property. Okay, it's work. And I want to reinforce again, if I may, this is not an easy task to follow through on because of the boom of, of the loss of that piece of situation.
Yeah, which are working, and we're working on it. Next issue is, I received an email from Mayor Funk, um, concerning a donation to the Edgewood's Cheerleaders. And I'm not opposed to, um, any donation, however, just the numerous amount of, of mail that I receive to, um, donate to, um, hundreds of courses. And I just take offense at the, the matter that the mayor's asking us to donate what we can, and he was the first to deny us a raise, when I publicly, on the local news, he said, uh, you know, we're going to double the raises. So, I just take offense that on one hand, he's denying us any increase in pay, on the other hand, he wants to donate to every cause in the city. Thank you.
Your defense is noted, I have another update for you, Councilman, if I may.
And you're on to that.
Another issue, yes, sir. Uh, you had also requested, uh, information, you guys, hole number twelve, one fifty-seven, Alwin's.
That has been done.
Yes, yes, I tried by there to check every one, thank you. Any other Council President, uh, Council members communications, Council second.
Uh, just as, as far as the, uh, uh, talking about abandoned homes, is there, are there, uh, changes in the code that the city would recommend to make it, make this process more easy for the building inspector? Or is this outside of our control?
Unfortunately, it's outside of our control, sir.
Okay. And the second point, uh, Richard, on the, uh, just on the Providence Water front. Today, I got an email informing me that a list of streets in, in Word One would have flushing in the next few days from Providence Water.
Good for you because people, I don't trust, remember that email curiosity, so. I, I just, I don't, I just... I was on my face thinking it was this bright orange, bright orange thing, you know, outdoors thing, the pressure of the water. All I asked was that they be notified if there's some of the water. If it's an emergency, emergency is an emergency. I think they use that term a little too much, but, that being said, thank you.
Any other discussion? There being none, any old business? Instruction to new business?
We have a resolution directing the portion of the proceeds from sale, police station to be expended equally in each of the six floors and cities under a pair of streets and roads. This is to be referred to the finance committee on December sixth. We have post ordinance eleven dash twelve dash one. This is ordinance, um, in chapter seventeen, that goes to the Cranston, Title Z, it is for zone change for now against the boulevard. This ordinance will need to be referred directly to the full council of public care due to advertising requirements, so we will need a motion to suspend the rules on that particular motion. It will be referred to, for here, uh, to the full council on December seventeen. We have an appeal, dated November ninth, filed by Rowan Resource Recovery. It's appeal of the decision of October thirty, two thousand twelve, under Rowan Resource Recovery Corporation. We have an appeal, dated November ninth, filed by Rhode Island Resource Recovery, is appeal over decision of October thirty, two thousand twelve, under Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, to develop industrial pre-trimming invoice for fee adjustments, to be referred to the public works committee for here on December third. We also have an appeal, um, filed, again, on behalf of Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, this is with regard to a fine notice to be referred to the public works committee for here on December third. We have the following new claims to be referred to the claims committee for here on December seventeenth. Personal injury claim of Beth Bartanian of a lunch incident on February twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve. A personal injury claim of Joyce Tyne from lunch incident on October thirty, two thousand twelve. We have subrogation property which claim from that life on behalf of your sure Denise and Robert Folet from lunch incident on October tenth, two thousand twelve. We have a personal injury claim of Dulce de los Santos from lunch incident on October twelfth, two thousand twelve. That's all.
Okay, I'll attend, attend motion to spend a little thirty-four B for the, uh, zone change ordinance. Move. The motion a second? Any discussion, if there'd be none, could we say go?
Councilman Munchell, yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Councilor Vittia?
Yes.
Councilor Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Now, I'll attend motion to, uh, refer all the managers, red, as we put it, to the appropriate committee, so moved. Is the motion a second? Any discussion? Could we say go?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Uh, Ms. Lane's business on the books, ask.
These two matters are just informational, the suit ordinance is being carried, uh, with regard to requirements from, um, D E M, and I believe that solicitor has any further explanation. Um, the other ordinance is on here for informational purposes, this is the one with regard to the transfer of ownership to the tech next, tech center. We still have not received the executed copy of that agreement in my office, and as the end of the year is approaching, um, it, it should have been continued, it's a concept that is posted through our documents out here, that we need to get that.
Through the chair, if I may. I, I got an update, uh, today, that, uh, attorneys representing both of these, uh, Cranston schools, as well as Rhode Island Corporate Education, are meeting tomorrow, in an attempt to, uh, work out the purchase and sale agreement, so it, it may be coming, yeah, any second.
Okay, so good. Uh, reminders to the council, to the hall, if, that some of these schedules moved up by one week. Safety and public works will be on, on next Monday, December third, and there's a request to have that, um... Meeting moved? This meeting moved up for time? Public works, uh...
All meetings are moved up.
Yeah, moved up, but is it, the, 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 the public works meeting is scheduled on the same evening as the tree lighting. So the request is to move the meeting to five thirty. And then, uh, safety services will, will convene at, uh, I believe, the regular time of seven o'clock. So with that being said, uh... Uh, again, I need to know ahead of time, Councilman, uh, Cyclos and I had to attend a couple meetings this summer, and Councilman San Maria, the last meeting, uh, only to be, uh, discover that there was no forum, so please, if, if, if you're not gonna be there, we'll just cancel the darn meeting, we'll have it on the, the regular dock, and so, we can let us know.
Council, you know, I will be there, as chairman, as vice chairman, San Maria is gonna be there, hopefully, if not, I suggest cancel, it's just gonna be administrative reports. I will be there, as I have to chair the safety service meeting at seven, so I will be there.
I will be there.
Okay. And now, on... Vote works?
Uh, okay, I'll be there.
Okay, very good, we came up with one for five, and again, five thirty.
Five thirty for vote works, on the third.
Yes. And the seat, Council, that's where you'll be, we'll call it on Monday, December seventeenth.
To the chair. The, the finance ordinance meetings are also being held next week, they're being held on the sixth, which is...
I mentioned that, I'm sorry, I didn't get to that, but yes.
Yeah, which is earlier than usual, because of the council meeting on seventeen.
Will you read through the email?
Rules will set up, you journalists, anyway, for that time, so...
Make sure I hold out the seventeen meeting, we're taking pictures. Make sure I hold out the meeting on seventeen, because we're taking pictures for the chain.